All right, so next on the agenda, we have the enrollment 2020 enrollment annual report. Dr. Swift?
Very good. I appreciate the opportunity to share trustees, we do this every December, but of course, this year, like everything else, the enrollment report is very, very different. The report isn't very different. The report is very similar to the annual reports that you've seen, but the way we derived the report is quite different. And so I wanted to begin this evening by giving a shout out to members of Ms. Linden's team, Mr. Dan Berger, who has joined us, and his partner, Ms. Candace Roselle Williams. They have been on this work deep and wide since August, September in ensuring that we got our children signed up for school and that we were beginning to understand the enrollment patterns. This report has been, Dan is going to help us with questions, as is Ms. Linden. It has been, these are the audited numbers, correct? Mr. Berger? Yes, these are the audited numbers, which is why trustees, we always present this in December. I know that parents will say, but count days in October, and why would we wait? Well, the thing is, count day, particularly this year, wasn't a day, it was like count month, because there were a lot of additional steps that the state required to ensure that we were getting our count accurate. So trustees, in addition to Mr. Berger, Ms. Roselle Williams, I want to give a shout out to our teachers and our staff, because they had to do additional steps to confirm attendance and to confirm the count. It isn't as simple as just a child showing up on a Zoom screen. There are steps that had to be taken in the auditing of this report. So, so what we're looking is to understand the enrollment for this year, and certainly enrollment is reduced across the country in schools. We see that pattern occurring. And so one of the first questions we bring to this is how does our reality compare to that of others? So, so that's one of our kind of driving questions. We'll be looking this evening at headcount. I want to be clear, trustees, you all know very well that on the Finance Committee, we also look at a different thing called FTE, the full-time equivalent. We're not bringing that forward this evening. These are actually the number of students, the number of children being served in the Ann Arbor Public Schools. So we'll look at that headcount, fall enrollment by level, our county program enrollment, student mobility, schools of choice, and then our next steps. You can see here, seventeen thousand four hundred and four students on Y5-12 campuses, and four hundred and seventy preschoolers. Those are not just at Westerman, they are at Westerman and also at our other preschool programs across the district. And the total then seventeen thousand eight hundred and seventy-four. When we look at this comparison to prior years, you can see there, the number that we've said since a couple of months ago is that we anticipated being somewhere around five twenty-five to five fifty, and the actual headcount number is five hundred and forty-seven students. And when we think about our overall enrollment in the district, that is about a three percent change, a three percent decline in enrollment. When we look at where this occurs, you can see here that at high school, we're about forty-four students different from two thousand nineteen, fall two thousand nineteen to fall two thousand twenty. At middle school, it's about fifty students, and then at elementary school, it's about four hundred and fifty-three students. And Ms. Osensky, if you will make the note, I know that this is the way we normally present this slide, but given the COVID year, let's go ahead before we post this tomorrow and post the actual number of the change. Forty-four at high school, fifty students at middle school, and four hundred and fifty-three at elementary. What Ms. Linden is going to support us with tonight is inside of that change at elementary, trustees, a significant percentage of that change at elementary is at the Y5 Kinder year. We'll talk more about that in just a moment, but I do want to touch on the fact that it's right at thirty percent of the overall change in enrollment, about forty percent of the elementary change, and that is the Y5 and Kinder students who, by all accounts, are waiting a year to join in the Ann Arbor Public Schools, which is a trend across the country. So we'll get back to that, just putting a flag in that component of this report. So we always look at a variety of metrics with our enrollment, and here you can see, very similar to prior years, African-American and Asian enrollment remaining right at fourteen percent each, Caucasian enrollment at forty-nine percent, Hispanic at three percent, Middle Eastern at a little over one percent, and multi-ethnic at nineteen percent. This is very consistent with prior years, and probably another step we could take is just to add the previous year to this slide. I'm sorry, I didn't think of that before, but we can do that before we publish this. Okay. When we split out by levels, we always share this data to just take a look and see if there are big differences across elementary, middle, and high school with our race and ethnicity data. We're not seeing significant differences, other than really an increase or a higher number of multi-ethnic among our younger students. So, and that, as we've discussed in Performance Committee in years past, that is corresponding with a lower percentage of African-American students at that same Y5 through fifth grade level. Okay? Trustees, these percentages are remaining fairly consistent, one in eight students, about twelve percent of our students on INIEP, which is representative of special needs, documented special needs. I do want to point to that twenty-one percent of homes, students coming from homes impacted by poverty. Trustees, we do believe that that number is lower than in reality right now, because in a normal in-person year, our students would need, and our families would need, to have the form filled out in order to be having that free and reduced-priced lunch at school. Right now, because we're receiving that emergency food status, and we're very grateful for that, the form has not been required. We are encouraging all of our families to go ahead and get the form in, get it filled out, because our title and many other designations are based on that number. So we do not feel that this is an accurate representation, but we will keep an eye on this data. We can pull this data every month. We don't wait for the annual report to look at the impact of poverty in our system. English language learners at nine percent, pretty consistent to prior years. Good. This is where I'm going to ask for Ms. Linden to help. She has served on a national early learning leadership group. She has looked at the national trends around this Y5 Kinder and first grade phenomena, where parents have chosen, given the COVID year, to wait a year or to do an additional year of preschool. So I want her to share just a little bit there, but you can see, it's a hundred and seventy-nine students is the difference from last year to this year in the number of young fives in Kinders. So we'll talk more about this a little bit later as we look at next steps, and what we will need to prepare for as we prepare to begin the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. We want to be well-prepared for the incoming of many of these students. So with that, Ms. Linden, what would you add?
Sure. Yeah, I think you shared a good overview of our data and where we're seeing parents choosing to wait to enroll. It's hard to call this a drop, because these are, these are most of the time new families to us who are making choices before coming. But as Dr. Swift mentioned, we've seen a drop at young fives in particular. That particular option for families is designed for those who want to give their children another year, an extra year, before going into kindergarten. Because of COVID, many families have chosen to remain perhaps in their private preschool, or in their monastery, or to keep children at home for this year. And we certainly understand that choice, but it does translate to a twenty percent decline in young fives enrollment this year. And in addition, that's about seventy-five students, trustees. At the kindergarten level, we've seen about an eight percent decline there in what we normally see in enrollment, that represents about a hundred and four students. And so in, in average, we're at a little over ten percent. When we put that into context and look at what's happening across the country with kindergarten enrollment, we're actually in much better shape than many. We've looked at state-level data, Washington State, Georgia. Washington State is down fourteen percent in Kinder enrollment. Georgia is reporting eleven percent statewide. Recently, a Washington Post article was shared with us. They surveyed a hundred districts, sixty of them responded, all across the country, rather large, well-known districts, and the average of that sixty district group was sixteen percent decline in enrollment for kindergarten. So what this means for us is that we have a lot of work to do, to reach out, to find families, to make sure we get them enrolled for school this fall, to understand how to serve them best, make the process as easy as possible. That work begins in the spring when we come back from break, and we're looking at additional ways that we can support. You may know that in the past, we've held an expo, we've hosted it at the Westerman Preschool Center, and it's an opportunity for families to come and take a screener to decide whether they think young fives or kindergarten might be a better option. We're looking to do more events like that. We also want to have district enrollment events over the summer when the school buildings might be closed, but we might have an opportunity to be live in central locations around the district, taking paperwork and enrolling and doing screeners there as well. So we're going to keep problem-solving. I'm going to keep connecting with our national cohorts to get other great ideas from the team about how we can reach out, locate our students, and bring them in. And I'd be happy to answer more questions about that, but it does represent about thirty-two percent of our decline. That's at young fives and Kinder.
Very good. Let's, if it's all right, President Johnson, we'll go ahead and wrap up, and then we can come back to that if needed. We always report our Washina Educational Options Consortium data, and as you can see, trustees, that this is remaining very consistent across YHI, ECA. WAVE is actually down this year so far, but we are seeing those students at Pathways. So we are thinking that, you know, that end number is small there, but we are seeing students through our Pathways Program. And then our total WEOC program, you can see, we're right at the very two hundred and sixteen students, right, almost exactly where we were this time last year. One of the next areas of change in this narrative is the mobility in our Ann Arbor community. And Dan Berger, we're probably going to ask you to help us out a little bit here in just a second, but this section of slides is about those students who are arriving to the district and those students who are departing from the district. This first set of data are the arrivals from inside the attendance boundaries. So these are students who are not moving to the area. They're students who've already lived in the area, and yet they have chosen to attend Ann Arbor Public Schools. You can see that number this year at one hundred and ninety-two, so it is down there. You can see on the next slide, the arrivals and where they're coming from. Trustees, this is a slide we've often spent some time on. You can see they're, they're coming from the same places. Those arriving to us from private actually ticked up just a bit, but private and religious remaining about the same. Those arriving from charter is about half of what it was last year, and then homeschooling other does tend to vary from year to year. When we think about arrivals, this slide thirteen really puts it all together. You can see, trustees, this one really tells a story. Arriving from inside our county, so coming to us from other districts, has remained a consistent number for last year and this year. Those arriving to us from outside the county, so from out of the country, from out of the state, that number is just over half less, about half less than last year. So right there is where we see, and we know anecdotally, our international students with the University of Michigan, they may, the student may be here, but they might not have brought their family. We, the out-of-state moves to Ann Arbor for a new job, that kind of thing. We've really seen that arrival number fall off. So that really constitutes the difference of the total new resident enrollment, moving from seven hundred and fourteen students down to four hundred and one students. So this is a significant component of our truth with regard to enrollment this year. I will do new schools of choice, and then I want to ask you, Dan, to just weigh in, because you have been deep in this data for months, a couple of months, and I just want you to share with the board your perspective. The new schools of choice enrollment, not surprisingly, is less, a little less than a third of that are students who were previously enrolled with us, and they used school of choice to prevent their move this year from disrupting their educational process. So that is a change. Our overall number, because the end of our enrollment number has changed, go ahead to the next slide, our overall residents and non-resident children of employees remaining right at eighty-nine percent of our overall enrollment. So that has, that has changed by about a point five percent, so not, not really a change there. Student mobility, these are our departures. Always helps me with this data to remember the moving van is pointed away from us in the upper right-hand corner, and you can see the departures, departing AAPS to go to a charter, to go to a homeschool, to go out of the county, out of the state, out of the country. You can see that number is really lower than it was last year. So eleven hundred and eighty-three students down from twelve fifty-four last year. So, Dan, before we move on, just talk to us a little bit about, we understand that the whole number has changed by five hundred and forty-seven, but as you've been deep in this data, how would you help us as the statistician who's in charge of this understanding this? How would you help us to understand this further?
Yeah, thank you, everybody, for having me tonight. Basically, I've been talking to Dr. Swift and Ms. Linden about the trends that I have been seeing as I've been preparing these slides and deep in this data, as, as Dr. Swift mentioned, and just sort of trying to see what the overall trend and the overall story is. And I really think we've kind of latched onto it a couple of different points here. You know, we're down about five hundred and forty-seven students, total headcount numbers. A full third of that is made up by the kindergarten and young fives, so our kindergarten-level people, people who chose not to enroll this year, for whatever reason, often because they wanted to either wait a year, stay home, be in person for that very, very young age, perhaps. But, you know, however, I can say anecdotally, in some of the, some of the, some of the comments we have from some of those, I can see some people who had originally enrolled for kindergarten, like way back before all of this even happened, and in some of the comments, I can see people saying, "We're going to go and do this other thing for this period of time, and when Ann Arbor is back face-to-face, we'll be back." So I think that, that idea of planning for an influx of new K students next year is going to be pretty important moving forward. So, so a third of our, of our drop in overall numbers is that kindergarten level. Beyond that, you can see these arrivals and departures really tell a story. Overall, the departures, we have a little bit less, but kind of ballpark-y what we would usually have departing. Actually, it's about forty-five less than the four-year average. I calculated that out. And it's the arrivals that really dinged us for the rest of it, because we have, you know, three hundred less arrivals coming in. And I, again, I did some calculations on the four-year averages, and we had, you know, forty-one percent less people coming compared to the four-year average from other public schools in Michigan, so from within the state, but outside of our area. Thirty-one percent fewer coming in from out of state, and seventy-two percent fewer coming in from out of country. And so that really has a big impact when we usually have those kind of big numbers coming into the community that just weren't arriving this year because of everything going on with the pandemic and all of that. So those are kind of the big trends as I see them. The school of choice remained remarkably consistent from last year to this year. I think there were, I mean, I'll check my numbers here, there were sixteen more school of choice students across the whole district, not just the new ones only. So it was a very consistent number there, but the other part of the number went down a little bit, largely due to these arrivals into our attendance area. So that's, that's the trends as I see them.
Very good. Thank you, Dan. Just to wrap up, I know that trustees, you are always wondering about if our programs are remaining solid. You can see here that despite the pandemic, our International Baccalaureate at Mitchell, Scarlet, and Huron is remaining consistent in their numbers. So we have not seen a drop there. And then we probably need to remove this slide for future years, but trustees, you recall that we've kept an eye on the A2C team at Northside. Basically, the school is fully enrolled at that six hundred and thirty, six hundred and thirty-five number. So as you can see here, the story on STEAM occurred a while back, and yet, I guess what we're saying with these two slides, IB and STEAM, is that the enrollment has increased, and it endures. And so that is important to note. We have a number of next steps. We always do, but tonight, given our COVID pandemic and our commitment to emerge from this pandemic with a strong set of offerings for our students throughout the remainder of this year, and as we prepare for next year, we will keep our eye on the COVID impact. We're working with our principals now, because they are ready in that January, February timeline to start the enrollment processes. And yet, we know, trustees, that our Kinder roundups, our program previews across the district will need likely to look very different this year. So there will be a lot of additional work. Our principals and our teachers and our school teams, as well as members of, of my leadership team, we are committed to building an enrollment process that will be durable and robust and keep people healthy and safe as we navigate the, the end of this pandemic over the coming weeks. Our high rate of mobility is the nature of our community, but we'll keep an eye on how that's happening as we move into spring and summer. We are going to need to keep an eye on our space and making sure that we're keeping folks safe in the space. So you'll be hearing more about that. I'll jump down to the update on our growth and development, housing growth and development. Trustees is coming to you in January of two thousand twenty-one. We've been talking to the bond committee, board committee about that, so you'll see that update very soon. We also are just really going to need to focus on what is the best approach to ensure the stability and the continued that our, that our parents of young fives in preschool and Kinder know how to sign up, our outreach in the community. So you will see that plan forthcoming from us, and trustee Kelly not trying to put you on the spot, or exec board leadership, but probably that would be something that would come through Planning Committee. It seems apparent that that would be the case. So, so enrollment, our year report is a similar report, but it tells a very different story, and we just want to share that with you all and with our community. Trustees, you have received four supplemental documents this evening. We always share those documents. I would, I believe that it will be our intent to review those more in-depth with our Performance Committee as we move into January, just because there's so much inside those pages. And I just noticed a short time before the meeting that one of those pages, it looks like we need to open up a column that had been dropped there. So trustees, if you see that, just know that we'll be following up tomorrow on that one column on one of the charts. So with that, President Johnson, we appreciate your patience as we've not only as we've not only plowed through the fall enrollment report, but also kicked the tires a little bit to analyze where we are in this fall enrollment process or fall count process, spring enrollment process, and our ongoing COVID pandemic. So with that, Ms. Lyndon, Mr. Berger, and I will be happy to listen to your discussion, take careful notes, and respond to any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much.